...议员Light.
Here.
委员议
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 Here.
委员议 Here.
President.
Thank you, and would you join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and would you join me and the city council in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the choir of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, our sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant Krista Long. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight, and we have the first resolution.
Resolution honoring McKinley McNeil's Parkland Magnet High School stellar 2016 indoor track season. Whereas McKinley is the daughter of Reginald Endeavor McNeil, an older sister to her brother Reginald Junior, the family resides in Kernersville, North Carolina, and whereas she is a senior at Parkland International Baccalaureate Magnet High School in Winston-Salem ranked in the top eight percent of her class with a GPA of 4.59
Wow.
And a member of the National Honor Society Youth in Government and the Mandela Society, Crosby Scholars and Jack and Jill of America, and whereas McKinley is a gifted scholar-athlete who possesses special abilities in the classroom as well as on the track. She is nationally ranked number three in the United States and number one in North Carolina in the indoor 500-meter run, number nine, United States, and number one in North Carolina in the indoor 400-meter run, and whereas at the 2016 High School Indoor Track and Field Championship at the Armory in New York City, McKinley respectfully represented North Carolina with an eighth-place finish in the 400-meter run, and whereas her stellar 2016 indoor season included setting a new North Carolina number-one all-time 500-indoor-meter record with a time of 113.2 and becoming the North Carolina 4A High School Indoor 400-meter state champion. McKinley is poised to continue her 2015 outdoor status as the number-one 400-meter sprinter in North Carolina with a current best time of 53.4, and whereas McKinley is as committed to her community and church as she is academics and athletics. She is a member of Grace Presbyterian Church in Winston-Salem and also performs community service through a partnership with Grace, Winston-Salem State University, and Project Hope to mitigate hunger in our community and present a positive role model for community youth, and whereas McKinley has earned a full scholarship to the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and plans to major in English before pursuing a law degree. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem are extremely proud of her and do hereby recognize and congratulate McKinley McNeil for her outstanding and stellar 2016 indoor track season and commend her for her academic and athletic accomplishments.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second. Motion second. I'll further motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note? That is unanimous. Councilmember Bessie is going to present this, our runner in the council here.
Although I can't run like this. I am jealous.
And I'm not a brother. I just live in the South Ward.
And we've noted that we also have an alumnus of Parkland, athlete there, Councilmember Deborah, and the representation of the South Ward that Parkland resides in, and I'd like to present it on behalf of all my colleagues and the mayor to McKinley.
Thank you. Mayor Joins, Mayor Protim Burke, council members, individuals who helped prepare this, I would like to personally thank you for this recognition. It serves as encouragement as I proceed to the state meet this weekend. I would also like to thank my family members, athletic director, coaches for participating in this and supporting me today as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good place. Members of your family could come up and join you?
Members of the family, come stand.
Making your remarks, because you know you can't have an outstanding athlete, you don't like you like this without support.
Mother, father.
Thank you. Mayor, council, staff, good evening.
Good evening.
We really appreciate this recognition. Deborah, come on up, that the council is giving my daughter, even though she's won trophies and medals, but this recognition ranks very high on that, and I'd like to thank the mayor and Mayor Protim Burke, our church member, and we also have our pastor here, Pastor Marshall, the athletic director, Linwood Gerald, and the greatest track coach in North Carolina, Coach Hughes, and Coach Jerrel Elliott, and church member Devale Penn, who is a uncle and so sort, so thanks a lot.
Well, glad to have you here tonight. Congratulations. And good luck this week on the state trials.
May I just?
May I?
Councilmember Burke?
Do I see the brother here? Oh, stand up so you can...
Councilmember Taylor?
Mrs. McNeil, I know the councilmembers all have something to say. I don't know if we'll have the time to do it, but as a former student-athlete and a graduate of Parkland High School, I wanted to say thank you for what you've done, not only for yourself, for your family, and for your support network, but what you've done for our high school that we hold in such high regard. You've been able to do it on the track, and I was taken back when I heard your accomplishments in the classroom, and I think that's the way to do it, all around the board. So thank you for what you do. There's a lot of people watching you, you don't know, but we're proud of you. Continue to do the great work and go on and be what you're supposed to be. To the family, to the support network, we appreciate what you do, and I'm going to say on behalf of the Southeast Ward, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Bessie?
Just a couple other notes. I don't think that everyone appreciates just what it takes to have this level of achievement in athletics, academics, and community involvement all at the same time. Thank you for that, and on a personal note, thank you for choosing the right school.
Yeah.
University of North Carolina will appreciate your talent.
Very good. Next item, please.
Recognition of Angie Moo and Todd Barr for receiving the Big Brothers and Big Sisters 2016 North Carolina Big of the Year awards.
Good evening, mayor. Mayor Protim, members of the council.
Good evening.
I have Shawan Gabriel, who's the president/CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters here tonight, and Todd Barr, he can come on up. He is a city employee in our Recreation and Parks Department, adult athletic supervisor, and they're going to tell you a little bit about this award.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Across the state, we, every year, Big Brothers Big Sisters serves around 6,000 individuals. Here in Winston-Salem, we serve roughly 700 in the last year. Out of those, your very own, our very own, Todd Barr, who is named Big of the Year for our state, representing our state at our national conference coming up in June, and we want to give him a minute, a moment, to say a few words. We would like to thank you for recognizing his efforts in the support of Big Brothers Big Sisters.
Mayor Joins, council members, thank you for the recognition, but it's not about me. It's about Big Brother, Big Sister giving me the opportunity, and it's not what I'm teaching a young individual, it's what I'm learning from him. Thank you again.
Thank you. Want to introduce your little with you?
Your little.
This is Tyrone Wilson, and this is my little brother. We've been together for almost six years now.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. If you have the next item, please.
Proclamation declaring May Building Safety Month. Whereas our city's continuing efforts to address critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound, and whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure safe construction of buildings, and whereas these guardians, dedicated members of the International Code Council, use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play, and whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most US cities, counties, and states. These modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, and earthquakes, and whereas building codes driving growth through innovation, resilience, and safety, the theme for Building Safety Month 2016 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building a safe, energy-efficient, resilient construction, to be mindful of fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and backyard safety, and to recognize the countless lives that have been saved due to implementation of safety fire codes by local and state agencies, and whereas Building Safety Month is a time when Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and fire agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Allen Joins, mayor of the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 2016 Building Safety Month in Winston-Salem, and I encourage our citizens to join with their communities to participate in Building Safety Month activities, given under my hand and seal this 16th day of May 2016.
Yes, our chief building official, Dan Dockery, to come up. We also have with us the president of the Home Builders Association as well as the president of the Board of Realtors.
Mayor, council, thank you so much for having us.
It's a marvelous opportunity.
Dan, thank you, and thank you. You can see the cooperation that we have here in the community with the Board of Realtors, the home builders, and others there that are working to make Winston-Salem a safer place. So, Dan, thank you, and...
We do it as a team, and we come as a team to thank you. Mayor Protim, council, thank you so much for your support. It makes it a joy for us not only to be recognized as the best inspections division in the state of North Carolina, but to be able to go out and serve our community. Codes black and white, that's just part of it. The faces we see impacted by the codes are real. Y'all help make it a joy, knowing we have your support to go out and do what we do in the community. We thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item, please.
Proclamation recognizing Delta Sigma Theta Day. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a private nonprofit organization whose purpose is to promote human welfare, scholarship, and sisterhood, and whereas it was founded on January 13, 1913, by 22 women undergraduate students at Howard University in Washington DC and was incorporated in 1930, and whereas in 1939, the Alpha Nu Sigma chapter was chartered, and in 1959, the name was changed to the Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter, and whereas the city has one undergraduate chapter, the Pi Omnicron Chapter at Wake Forest University, and whereas the major programmatic focai of the sorority are centered on the organization's five-point program thrusts: one, economic development; two, educational development; three, international awareness and involvement; four, physical and mental health; and five, political awareness and involvement, and whereas members of the sorority are active in local, state, and national politics, and the group has won numerous awards on all levels, and whereas chapter program highlights include funding to community nonprofits, Zumba-Thon Health Fair, Financial Fortitude Workshop, Delta Fine Arts Incorporated, Delta Visions Incorporated, Human Trafficking, Winston-Salem Police Department, Little Dresses for Africa, Public Health of African-Americans, scholarships, new voter rights information, and voter registration, and whereas annually the sorority celebrates the events, programs, and progress of the previous year, and 2016 marks the 77th celebration of the Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter. Now therefore, I, Allen Joins, mayor of the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 16, 2016, Delta Sigma Theta Day in Winston-Salem, and commend the positive influence of the members of the city, given under my hand and seal the 16th day of May 2016.
We're delighted to have a number of the Deltas with us tonight. I had a chance to meet with them briefly earlier, and Councilmember Adams, in her red, is going to present this proclamation to the Deltas there. Ladies, if you'd like to come up.
Ladies and gentlemen, our chapter president is Soror Elizabeth Newton, and on behalf of the city of Winston-Salem and to the Sorors of the Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, we just want, you know, how much we appreciate your community engagement, whether that be in all of the titles and subject matters that was listed and read by the city secretary. We have been tasked by our national organization to be diligent and to be engaged with our communities on those matters that affect the quality of life of each and every human being. So, in that order, Madam President, I present to you the proclamation signed by the city, the mayor of Winston-Salem, Mayor Allen Joins, and the city council.
You're here.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Joins, elected officials, and other residents of Forsite County, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Elizabeth Newton, president of the Winston-Salem Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Let me first thank you for allowing us to be here today. It was in 1913 when 22 undergraduate women on the campus of Howard University in Washington DC founded Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. These women envision a sorority focused on eliminating barriers and handicaps to academic excellence, economic improvement, physical and mental health, and the political and social well-being of their communities. In March of 1913, two months after the sorority's founding, the founders participated in the Women's Suffrage March. Political awareness and social action were important then and continue to be important today. The sorority has sponsored multiple events and programs throughout this year, just to name a few: a public meeting with Police Chief Browntree and Assistant Chief Weaver, a program on human trafficking, a public evening and day with actor and author Daphne Maxwell Reed, Zumba-Thon and Health Fair. This past Saturday, May 14, the chapter started its May Week celebration with an economic development program titled Building Wealth, Entrepreneurship, Stock Investing, and Real Estate Investing. It included expert panelists such as Mr. Joe Dudley Sr., Mr. James Perry, CEO of the Urban League, and your own Stephen Harrison, economic development specialist. These panelists shared with the audience their knowledge on how to enhance their financial wealth. Mayor Protim, Vivian Burke was there to bring greetings, and Councilwoman DeeDee Adams brought the meditation. The May Week activities will continue on tomorrow with the sponsoring of a mental health community forum with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority and Omega Psi Phi Fraternity on the campus of Winston-Salem State University. On Wednesday, the chapter will spend the evening cleaning its adopted street area located on 14th Street. We will provide the evening meal to the families staying at the Kate B. Reynolds Hospice Home on Thursday. Friday is Sisterhood Fellowship, but during this time of fellowship, we will collect items for the Bethesda Center. We will end the week on Saturday, May 21, with a celebration luncheon, during which we will recognize the top African-American senior student with the highest GPA at each of the Winston-Salem Forsite County high schools. Additionally, we will award seven $500 scholarships to young ladies attending a four-year college or university. Again, I thank you for this opportunity, but before I sit down, I invite the members to stand up again, members of the chapter. We are so, so happy to bring these various programs to our community, continuing the vision of our founders. We're very proud of the partnerships and the collaborations we have had, and I know that we will continue to have with Winston-Salem Forsite County. Mayor Joins, we are so very grateful for this support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for what you do for our community and across the state and nation. Next item, please.
2014-15 Biennial Status Report on the Implementation of the Legacy 2030 Comprehensive Plan from the City-City Planning Board.
Recognize Mr. Arnold G. King, the chairman of the City-City Planning Board. Mr. King, glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protim Burke, council members. After the adoption of Legacy 2030 by all the elected bodies, the planning board agreed that we prepare a status report every two years, and this is our second such report. You should have a copy of the report at your packet. There's been a lot of activity in all 12 areas. I'm not going to go through all of that, but I would like to highlight just a few of these for you. In land use, we've published development opportunity maps showing vacant or underdeveloped land parcels that are either zoned for or the adopted plans of recommended for industrial, commercial, or multifamily residential development. In transportation, you and the county commissioners have adopted new regulations requiring bicycle parking and better pedestrian access within developments, and the city has put much more emphasis on building sidewalks. In economic development, a couple things worth noting here. One, our community has made major progress converting many of our older industrial buildings and sites into new productive uses, providing places of employment for literally thousands of people and housing for hundreds more. Also, we have started publishing a development dashboard report each quarter which briefly summarizes our development activity and trends and has compares over previous periods of time. And under the area of environment and sustainability, you've adopted new urban agriculture provisions in the UDO, and a number of community partners are establishing sites for those uses. In community character, you and the county commissioners approved a public art master plan and appointed a public art commission, which we're preparing to start their work as we speak. The planning board has also tried to bring Legacy 2030 principles more into our area plans as those plans are being updated, with additional emphasis on design concepts that can be used on key sites in each of these plans, and also making sure that the process of updating our area plans is very interactive with the citizens while also being efficient in the use of the time. Finally, you, as the city council and the citizens of the city, have implemented a number of Legacy 2030 recommendations by the passage of the general obligation bond issues in November of 2014, as well as other types of public financing in order to move key development projects, public facility projects forward. So, these implementation efforts, as well as the others highlighted in the report, came about through the efforts of many city and county departments, other community organizations, the private sector, and of course, our elected bodies. So, on behalf of the planning board, I would like to thank these community partners, thank the city manager and staff, and thank you for your leadership in preparing our community for the future as envisioned in Legacy 2030. Again, we just sincerely appreciate the support and feel like that the city is moving in the right direction. We thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any questions, Mr. King?
Not a question, just more of a comment. I really do view Legacy 2030 as a working document. I refer to it a lot in the real estate business. It kind of, while it's not law, it does give you, gives people a very good roadmap of where things are likely to go and where best practices can be used. I think it's also very good for neighborhoods to, again, even though it's not law, it does give them something to fall back onto and to use as a, again, as a roadmap of what the community thinks land use should be. So I think it's a very useful tool. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, Mr. King, I echo the comments of Councilmember McIntosh. I don't do this very often, but I think the citizens ought to hear this. I want to take the time to say thank you for your leadership on the planning board. I think you've done a swell job, and I was happy to support your reappointment at our last meeting, so thank you for what you do for our city.
That's good. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Burke?
I was also going to thank you, and I was going to ask if the citizens want to see this, where do we distribute this information so that the citizens can come well informed?
Well, it's on the website, and then hard copies are available where, Paul.
Besides the website.
Yes, we have a number of hard copies available for people who would like them, and we also have it prominently right on our homepage of our planning website as well.
That sounds good. That's positive, but Mr. City Manager, I believe what we should do, we should make sure that we put them at our recreational centers and our libraries, because this information some see and some don't, and it's too valuable, and it helps them to be more informed when people start talking about where we are as a city. It's good information.
We're extraordinarily proud of Legacy. I mean, we've won so many awards, Paul, and, but the best part of Legacy is that we're following it and carrying it out, as you can see by your report, Mr. King, and thank you so much, and the planning board for all the hard work there.
Thanks, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight's agenda, the city council is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda, and it's always a practice of the city council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from this agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. This meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed Tuesday at 9:00 AM and again Wednesday at 9:00 PM. Of course, members of the public can always get copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, online at the city's website, www.cityofws.org, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to pull from the consent?
C6.
Move for approval of the balance of the consent.
A motion to approve the balance. All in further motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note? That's unanimous. Item C6.
Item C6, consideration of additional financing for the development of a single-family housing in Ridgewood Place located in the South Ward. This item was recommended by Finance and Community Development Housing and General Government Committee. A, resolution authorizing additional financing for development in the Ridgewood Place subdivision to SG Atkins Community Development Corporation, and B, ordinance amended the project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council, to our citizens who are here. We heard some of the really, really great things that are going on in this community. I wanted to take the time to highlight what we have going on in the southeastern portion of the community. I'm excited about this project because it allocates over $1.3 million for the construction of homes and for homebuyer assistance to those who wish to live in the Ridgewood Place development located roughly off of High Point Road. As the southeastern portion of the city continues to grow and develop, we have a lot of great things going on. Anybody who's taken a ride there lately, you've seen the sidewalks, the roads, the parks, and just the complete redevelopment of the area with the help of some of the voters and some of the business community in the Southeast Ward. I wanted to point out three things about this project, and thanks to the Simon G. Atkins CDC, to all of our staff who helped to make this happen. A lot of names don't go mentioned, but there's a lot of people who helped to pull this together. It's important to note that at least 20% of the houses in this development will go to households at or below 60% of the area median income and sometimes a little bit above that. As we continue to have all of these projects, it's important that we keep in consideration affordable housing. When I first started off with my wife, it was difficult to find somewhere to live that was affordable, and as I go around to the college summits and hear some of our young people in our community speak, they want to stay in the city, but they need somewhere to live that's affordable where they can continue to enjoy some of the amenities that we have in the city. All of the units in this development, in this project rather, will be sold to households for owner occupancy, so you won't have that whole landlord-tenant issue. We've seen a lot of that happen in our community in a negative manner. The last thing I want to point out is that eligible buyers will be required to complete homebuyer education and a counseling program prior to loan closing. So this is just a wonderful program all the way around the board that helps us with affordable housing in the southeastern portion of the community. Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval of this item at this time.
Motion second. Discussion? Councilmember Burke?
This is indirectly, and I would like for the community development, Mr. Brooks' department, to also bring us in the projects we have been working with, similar to the one that Alderman, the councilperson, has spoken about, and I think the citizens would be surprised how much investment we've made in providing decent housing for people to be able to afford and live in and cut away some of that landlord-tenant problem. problem. Cut out.
Very good. Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll now go back to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items: There's an ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2015-16. There's an item relating to a traffic calming plan, an item relating to the City Council meeting schedule, as well as our public comment period. If you have the first item, please.
Item G1, ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2015-2016. Finance Committee forwarded this item to council with two in favor, none opposed, one standing, and one excused.
Did receive some additional information from Assistant Manager Rao in the packet there, and I'd recognize Councilmember Clark, if he's ready for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item 2?
Item G2, resolution approving the chase that Kings Tree Neighborhood Traffic Calming Plan for Funding and Construction. Public Works Committee recommended this item with three in favor and one opposed.
Councilwoman Bessie, as Chairman of the committee, I know you are not in favor of this, so might to recognize the Vice Chairman for a motion, if he's ready.
The Vice Chairman isn't present, but I'm a member of the committee, so I'll make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Councilmember Bessie and then Councilwoman Clark.
Briefly, I'll explain why I oppose this. This is a traffic calming plan, and fortunately, the principal item relied upon are speed cushions. I have stated on a number of occasions and discussions in committee particularly, why I am extremely concerned with the trend toward overuse of these vertical control measures on public streets. I was not persuaded that there was a documented need for this measure in this location. There was no traffic accident information that was worked up, that was provided to the committee. Unfortunately, speed bumps and similar tools are the first thing that is always asked for, but they have severe drawbacks. They hamper access by emergency response vehicles, while these cushions are less harmful than the continuous speed bumps or humps, because they do have openings that permit fire trucks to maneuver through without damaging that equipment. They do not fail to slow down, or they do still slow down, I should say, police response vehicles, emergency medical response vehicles, and in this instance, you have a residential neighborhood with numerous of these speed cushions throughout the neighborhood. I believe that, in fact, and unfortunately, that this particular plan will have a net adverse impact on public safety rather than improvement. Therefore, I will oppose it, and I will continue to oppose similar plans for vertical control measures, except under extraordinary circumstances.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark, then Councilwoman Light.
Can I let Ms. White go first since it's her word?
Oh, okay. Thank you. What I'd like to point out about this neighborhood is the fact that they are very, very small roads, and so many of, well, any of the bulb-out kind of traffic calming simply would not work because the roads are too narrow as is. So I think in this instance, it was the traffic cushions were about the only possible answer. This is also, this neighborhood is also a cut-through from Main Street to Peters Creek Parkway, and it definitely needed some way to discourage people from zipping through the neighborhood in that, as a shortcut. So I certainly will support this. I think it was a case of no other options.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah. Reason I want Ms. White to go first, I will support this if the council member supports it, and she's endorsed it, so I will endorse it as well. I will say, I typically do not support these either, but for a different reason, I think they have a negative impact on property values. I think it would appreciate the property in the neighborhood. And secondly, I think you've got three times more than you need. There's some that are only two houses apart. But anyway, if the neighborhood wants it, fine, but I'll say what I say with all of these, if you ever want them out, you're going to pay to remove them because you asked for them.
Councilwoman Adams?
Yes, it would be interesting to know, and maybe we've collected this data before, Mr. Turner, of what has been the customer satisfaction rating from neighborhoods or neighborhood associations that have received them already over the years. I would be interested to know that, and I would also, and maybe we've seen it already or put it together, Mayor and members of this council, I would like to see us do an educational piece on 13th, showing what these traffic calming scenarios do to public safety when they have to get to us, and what they do for automobiles and the different types. I'd like to see us do that to help educate the public, because, yeah, they think they want it until they get it, and then they call and they don't want it anymore. But I also need us to help people to understand that in a public safety situation, whether it's the sheriff, the police, fire, EMTs, it's more than a notion, and I think we need to put together a video with Mr. MacNeil and his staff.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Having been through a couple of neighborhood planning or requests for traffic calming, I'm assuming that city staff was involved here to talk about alternatives and options. And so I know that, at least in the cases that I was involved with, there were other alternatives that were offered, and I've got to imagine that if this is what staff recommends, that it's the best thing to do. If 70% of the people on these two stretches of road agreed on this, then I think it's very hard to go against what the neighborhood wants. I agree, there may be pushback after it's in, and they have to live with them, but I think it's hard to say no to 70% of the owners that are there. And so I think in this case, we have to go with what the neighborhood wants and support that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Taylor?
Yeah, one of the things I don't like to do is have a policy debate when we're considering individual items, especially as relates to traffic calming. I think the neighborhood knows best, and I'm going to say, Councilmember Bessie, Councilmember Clark, I actually agree with you both, but if we're going to have a policy debate, let's just debate the traffic calming policy, as I said in committee. Right now, under the current policy, traffic speed bumps are allowed, and as long as they're allowed in the community to say that they want them, and they know what to do with their tax dollars, it's our responsibility to give the people what they want. Now, I've said this two or three times, Councilmember Bessie, let's have the policy debate, but as long as it's currently in the policy, I'll have to support it.
Very good. Councilwoman Bessie?
I hear my colleagues, and I'll be happy to schedule this for discussion again in Public Works.
Thank you. Do have a motion to approve this traffic calming measure. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Hearing one no, the motion passes six to one. Thank you very much. Item number three?
Item G3, consideration of council's June and July meeting schedules.
Councilmembers, we're proposing here to have two special meetings during June, one on June 6th at 5:30 and one on June 8th down in Raleigh at noon to meet with our legislative delegation, as well as counseling the July, both the July meetings. I would entertain a motion for that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bessie?
Just an inquiry, does this also cancel the committee meetings for July?
Yes. All meetings, yes.
All meetings, take them out.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that is unanimous. Thank you. Item four?
Item G4, public comment period.
Ladies, excuse me.
I was going to mention before we go to that.
Okay, go right ahead.
Yes, I would like to say that when we observed that the Brookwood Spec Building is in the process of being sold, and when we put that there, and we went up there and redeveloped Brookwood, relocated people, put them in better homes and better rental property, there was that land, and so we put a building there, as Mr. Clark, we talked about that, put the building there, and as councilpeople, it can motivate folks, and when Mr. Page said to me, I believe we have something that's going to work, and when I saw that somebody had purchased that, I wanted to say, thank you, thank you, and for what we've done, our real estate office, Mr. Page and his staff, and we hope this will motivate other folks.
Yeah. The medical-related use, that'd be a great catalyst, hopefully, there. Item four is our public comment period, and this is a time, once per month, that we invite citizens who would like to address the City Council and me on matters that are germane to city government. We'd simply ask that you state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. First person is Martha Cecil. Good evening, Mayor.
My name is Martha Cecil, and I'd like to tell you a little about Speak Out For Circus Animals.
Would you give us your address, please, Ms. Cecil?
Oh, 2026 Creekwood Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina.
Thank you.
We are a nonprofit grassroots organization formed in Greensboro three years ago, co-founded by Colleen Smith and me. In a nutshell, here's how we got started. One day, Colleen, who cannot be here tonight, asked me if I'd protest Ringling Brothers for the way they treat their animals with her. I didn't cross, it didn't cross my mind exactly what she was talking about, but I went with her. Little did I know that would change my life forever. I took my kids to Ringling Circus when they were young many years ago. We laughed, cheered, and clapped when the elephant stood on its head, bounced on a small drum, sat up when lions and tigers jumped through flaming hoops. Hmm, how do you get a six-ton elephant to stand on its head? How do you get these animals in these painful, hurtful positions? How do you get lions and tigers to jump through flaming hoops? Then Colleen shared documented facts with me about the unimaginable plight of wild animals, about how captive baby animals are trained until they break their will and remove any semblance of true nature until they perform out of fear for the rest of their life. When Colleen showed me this poster, I broke down and cried. That changed my life forever, and I am dedicated to this. Then she showed me this picture. That's the baby elephant. This is the baby tiger. Breaks your heart. So they have no voice and no choice. They perform out of fear. They spend their lives chained, transported in boxcars. Tigers and lions are in cramped cages, barely able to take a step. All eyes are riveted on the person with the metal hook or whip or electric prod, whether they are performing or not. So they cringe and cower as trainers and handlers approach. Baby elephants are ripped from their mother immediately after birth to resist. Bullhooks, electric prods, whips, and lots of other things are used to train them to perform out of fear. It's every parent's responsibility to teach children to respect and protect awesome and beauty of the magnificent free animals, not that they are disposable. All human performers have a voice and a choice.
Cecil, your time is up. Could you summarize?
For this baby elephant, this lion and tiger, we need to do the right thing. Circuses exploit animals, and have no place in compassionate society. It is barbaric and archaic.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
We have a petition.
All right, you may leave it with our city secretary. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Cheryl Simser, I think it is? Good evening.
I'm here to talk on the same topic. My name is Cheryl Simser.
Give your name and address.
Yeah, Cheryl Simser, I live at 1934 Murphy Lane in Winston-Salem.
Thank you.
I have over five years of undercover investigation experience, filming and documenting abuse and neglect, as well as serious safety violations in the circus. My works and my films have been featured in an HBO documentary called An Apology to Elephants, and have resulted in numerous USDA fines. So I know a little bit about what I'm talking about here. There's no doubt that animals are abused and suffer horribly in circuses. What the public doesn't know is that when you're going to the circus and your kid wants to ride an elephant, you have, in Winston-Salem, we have had circuses. We had one elephant, her name was Nina. She has killed two undocumented workers in the circus, and yet she was allowed to give rides to people in the public. I don't want my child to ride on an elephant like that. Another elephant that has been in Winston-Salem, Viola. She has run amok twice. Once she escaped and fell down a ravine, hurt herself, took 30 minutes to capture her. One time, she ran by the people waiting in the circus line to get in. This is some of the things that people don't know. Cole Brothers is one of the circuses that comes here. They have had violence, resulting in killing of two members of the public, injuring more than a dozen others in rampaging performances, causing tens of thousands of dollars in property damages. I'm only speaking about the circuses that come to Winston-Salem. One of the ones had a 450-pound tiger run amok in Queens, New York, causing a five-car pileup, and $60 million lawsuit was filed. One of the clowns in the circus was also found guilty on nine counts, including sodomy and sexual abuse. These are the people that were allowing into our town and we're allowing to interact with our children. Ringling Brothers, after 145 years of using and performing elephants, has decided that the public opinion has changed, and they have retired their elephants. We need to be a more compassionate society. There's no doubt the abuse exists. What I'm here to talk about tonight is also the safety of our town, the safety of our people and our children. Cole Brothers is another one. They have had people that have died. These elephants have killed people, and we're allowing our children to ride on their backs. We are calling for a ban on wild animals in the circus, and we would like to follow cities like Los Angeles and Oakland who have banned the bullhook. I would love to show you what a bullhook is. It's the instrument that they use to torture elephants and get them to be submissive and do their tricks, but it's considered a deadly weapon, and it is illegal to bring into this meeting. That's what is going on behind the scenes. The elephants have also, some of them have been diagnosed with tuberculosis, which is contagious to humans, and some of the states have banned these elephants from coming in. We don't. We allow them in. So what we're asking for is basically an all-out ban on wild animals in the circuses. We're not asking for a ban on circuses. We're not asking for a ban for domestic animals. Asheville, North Carolina, has recently stepped up and been the first city in North Carolina to issue a wild animal ban. There is more than enough evidence to show that not only these circuses are cruel, they are also not safe, and we are putting our children and our families at risk by having them here.
Thank you. Could you summarize as well, please?
I am calling, please, for a ban on wild animals in the circus for the sake of our general public and for the sake of the animals. It's the 21st century, let's be compassionate.
Thank you. We will certainly put that into the process and then.
Okay. I have a video, and I would like to know where I can send, I have so much information, I didn't know where, I couldn't possibly print it all out, and I just would like to know where I would send it.
Certainly work with our city manager, and he'll be happy to work with it.
Okay, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Thank you. Joanne Allen?
Before I start, I would actually like to make a correction. One of the reporters, Mr. Wes Young, had indicated a couple months back that I am a critic of the Winston-Salem City Council. I just want to make this correction, that there is a difference between a critic and someone who's actually truthful, okay? So if he could, you know, maybe in the future, just make that correction, that it is a difference between a critic and someone who is actually telling the truth. First, I'd like to start with the fact that there was an article that Mr. Wes did in Sunday Paper, and it was actually called Big Goods, Big Goals, Big Hurdles Face Winston-Salem Future, and I hope everybody had the opportunity to read it as well. This article actually is the research of the Pew Center in America, and this actually, this research shows across the metropolitan cities, 229 total, that Winston-Salem ranks number nine as far as an increase in the, well, actually, is an increase in the lowering of the incomes here in Winston-Salem, all right? So I just wanted to make sure, I know you all know that, but the people in the city does not. First of all, in 1980, R.J. Reynolds, they actually did lose quite a few G. First of all, in 1980, R.J. Reynolds, they actually did lose quite a few jobs. They employed over 25,000 people. American Airlines employed over 14,000 people, and Haynes employed over 8,000 people. One of the things I'd like to correct, that I did not see in the article, and it's not so much a correction, but the fact that, we're talking about 30 years, because we're talking about the mid-1980s, when poverty actually, you know, and all the jobs, we lost these manufacturing jobs. My question to the paper is this. I would like to see more investigative or more questions asked. Because when you come and you tell the city residents that what's going on is the fact that, oh, we're going to come back and have this reemergence of manufacturing jobs. Well, if you don't know how we got there, then how in the world can we fix it? And the problem that I have is that in 2004, if the Winston-Salem Alliance, headed by Mayor Allen Jones, and the Winston-Salem Business, Inc., headed by Robert Bob Leek, can raise over $45 million, but yet it's still the city ranks number two in the country for having more poor people living in poverty, we've got a serious problem. I call that a travesty of politics. And the city council need to understand your role in this, starting with the current as well as the past city council members. So I just want to state, please.
Give us, Allen, your time's up.
Well, thank you very much. You all have a very nice evening.
Thank you. I want to correct something. You say every time that the city is number two in poverty levels. Go back and look very closely at that. We're forty-two. And I think what you're, you're misinterpreting a study that came out some time ago. So for the record, the city's forty-two, still way too high, but that's where we're at. Thank you so much. Ladies, I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Burke. She had a, received a wonderful honor today at Wake Forest University. She received a doctorate of laws in recognition of her work in this community for so many years, and we're so proud of her.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. He also has his doctorate. I said to so many people today and yesterday, the atmosphere with people who are receiving honorary doctorates and with President Hatch and Mrs. Hatch, what a wonderful feeling. And they also could tell you that when I became an elected official, Wake Forest had been here 21 years. And I had the opportunity to see Wake Forest develop. And I was also pleased that they were pleased that as Afro-American I am, that I have spoken up clear and stood strong for people. Also, something was read today by Provost Hurst. Hurst, K-E-R. And he stated that with small businesses, how we had improved in this city, and also with women-owned business, how we have improved. So I want to say, sure, we can criticize and we can talk about where we're not. But I think we'll do well if we talk about where we are and have citizens who will join us to help us to make this city what you want it to be. I've said to the mayor and members of this council, we need to stop stepping back when people criticize and say certain things that are not totally correct. We need to toot our horn. And I feel good being a citizen in this city. And people will tell you, I like to say, my city. And I tell others of you, it's your city too. Love it like I love it. Take on an ownership and do things to improve it. And I want to thank God, and I want to thank my colleagues. And I want to thank the mayor and the city manager and the staff as we come and go to make this city a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, mayor. To the ladies who came up and spoke on the subject of banning wild animals from the circus, I just want to thank you for bringing that to our attention. I know some of the other council members may be considering it as well. But I'll do a little bit more research on it, and I intend on filing the act and bringing it forward for consideration. I don't know whether we have the authority to do so as far as the state level is concerned. I did hear you say Asheville had did it, so I'll be happy to introduce that, and I thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yeah, we had a incident on Kennaman Road last week where a firearm was discharged of the folks that lived there, and I've gotten a number of emails. You should have received today or within the next few days a letter from the police department with an update on all that. And I think you'll see a lot of progress has been done. I don't have the letter with me, but it is very detailed and fairly lengthy. And I don't know if that's being sent out electronically or through the US mail. I don't know. But it, I did read the letter over the weekend, and I know it was supposed to go out today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Bessie.
I'd just like to note that there are a couple of public safety-related neighborhood meetings coming up in the southwest ward over the next couple of weeks. On May 31st, at South Fork Recreation Center, beginning at 6:15, be a meeting of the Mardon Hills neighborhood with myself and representatives from the police department. And on June 2nd, at 7:00 PM at Miller Park Recreation Center, the Ardmore Neighborhood Association will sponsor a public safety issues meeting. Again, I'll be there, as will representatives from the police department. So if you live in either those neighborhoods, you're particularly, you're invited to come on out and participate in the community discussion.
Thank you. And I will close the public comment period for the record there as well.
Before you close it, I think there are two more people who would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, someone signed out, signed up. Does someone else want to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's John Churn. I'm at 3124 Kennaman Road. Here to thank you, Councilmember Clark, for addressing that issue. Thank you all. I'm here just as a concerned citizen and wanted to share. I know some of you received several emails from, from our neighbors about some very dangerous and illegal activities going on in our neighborhood. And we're doing our very best to collaborate with you all and with the police to help rectify this and help keep our families safe. I do want to go on record, on behalf of our community, and thank our district captain, Doug Nance, I believe is in attendance. Thank you for being here, Doug. Has been incredibly responsive to our needs, came and met with us as a community, helped us understand what we, what we could do, what they could do and couldn't do, and how we might be able to be of support. We have seen quite a bit of response and action on the situation since our May 3rd kind of big push for communication. But we did want to come tonight, both to recognize the city for the work that you're doing so far, but also to go on record, to state that we are still incredibly concerned about this situation. It's still not over. It still represents a significant threat and danger to our families, we believe. And, and we stand here, ready to continue our collaboration with you all and with Captain Nance and the police department in whatever ways we can to, to support this work to help us bring a greater level of safety back to our, our community, so. And I don't want to preempt, and I know, I live fortunate enough to live a few houses farther away than some of my neighbors, and so there's a bit of security and geography there for me. So I want to make sure that I'm, I'm not missing something for my, my neighbors. But anyway, I thank you all, both.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Jones, thank you for, council members, thank you for the time. I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor. Can I have a follow-up?
Yeah, let me just, a gentleman here wanted to address this. Yes.
Just the folks here from Kennaman, if y'all hold after the meeting, be over a minute. I'd be glad to meet with you separately.
Thank you. Great. Yes, sir.
My question comes to you.
If you'd come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Joseph Rivera. My address is 3228 South Main Street here in Winston-Salem. You had mentioned to the young lady, Ms. Joanne Allen, that we were number forty-two, and I'm curious to know where you got that figure.
Was it some research done by Mr. Evan Rowley on the city manager staff? Be happy to share that with you later on, if you'd please, we got your name and address for the record.
And what is it that you're doing to address?
We have a, well, tonight is not a question-and-answer situation, but I'm happy to tell you, we have a very aggressive poverty reduction program underway right now that will be coming out this summer with a plan that will begin addressing those, those issues.
And so that's not tangible yet, but it will be made available to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? All right, now I'll close the public comment period. And I would make a recommendation or let you know that tomorrow at 10:30 at the Haynes Ranch Theater, we'll be having a State of the Community event where we will be presenting the real numbers about where Winston-Salem is. As you might recall, last year, we put a pretty strong goal out to move our community forward, to become one of the top 50 metro areas by the end of the decade, as well as addressing many social issues in the community. Tomorrow, I, along with the superintendent of schools, the head of the arts council, the vice chairman of the Winston Foundation and others, we're making a very detailed presentation about where we are exactly with this community. So invite anyone to come that would like to. Ladies and gentlemen, here, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. We adjourn.